All in favor?
Aye.
That's the vote to open the meeting as unanimous. Why do people say no on that? Seconded by David. You want to come up front? Or you want to stay back?
I don't know.
It's fine, you want. I've been here before, but we would still need to say who you are. This is a continued public hearing for four Main Street site plan review at Sotheby's property owner representing the property owners of Chris Roco.
Yes.
For Meridian Engineering. And the board should be in possession of responses to the initial review by Larry Graham, our consulting review engineer. And Chris responded to all of those. There's also a response to fire chief concerns from Charlie Ware, senior engineer also at Meridian. And Larry today really did, which from a site plan review perspective, would you agree with this is probably second review?
Yeah.
The site plan review issues in terms of the permitting are pretty much resolved, or at least agreed to, or reflected in the modified plans, right?
Right.
Larry had a number of individual items that were either missing or need to be revised in the plan. And if you want to go through what you revised, just so, can you just go through those quickly?
Sure.
I mean, you agreed to them, and if there's anything that you feel that is outstanding that you don't agree with. I know there was a little bit of confusion, I mean, the fact that Mr. Sotheby owns the adjacent lot makes some of these small, like these issues of going to the state and stormwater issues get somewhat alleviated by, you know, having Ed own the adjacent lot. I don't, are there any add butters here? All right. Yeah, and then, we're going to get to that. I just want to go through the major things that have been revised on the plan.
Sure.
And you can refer to, put the white document here for the board. In addition, you also, the plan, you guys should have, Kirk kind of laid out, you know, the compliant, just basically laid out the site plan issues and where they're at, you know, the criteria, and that will be incorporated into, the evaluation criteria will be incorporated into, you know, a certificate of vote at some point. I'll try to find your response. As an aside, you have also, and we'll get to that as well, the health department doesn't have any issues with the project, as well as, sorry, turn that on. And also, the highway department doesn't have any issues as well. And those letters are up to date.
You need Larry's, or I mean, Chris's response, if you need a copy right here.
It's right here. Mr. Roco's response is dated November 3rd. Okay? And you don't really have to have Larry's in front of you because he included Larry's comment. And the typical format that is used, you know, Meridian always does that. Not Airby Engineering does, but we always appreciate that. Okay. This is dated November 3rd.
November 3rd, all right, so I'll just go down through. Number one, we added the signature blocks to all the sheets down in the corner here for approval for Tom Quicks. And then, number two, talks about showing uses of the properties within 200 feet, and we added a locust map showing that. So, all properties within 200 feet are labeled.
Can you just, I mean, I, just because of the distance?
Yes.
To the, to the north, you have commercial, retail, the pancake house, across the street is residential?
Yeah, that's all, basically all single-family, yeah, single-family residential, and then, you know, restaurant, obviously, down here, White Farms.
Okay. And then, to the immediate south is, is White Farms, okay, and then switch.
And then vacant land in the back here.
Okay.
And then, single-family.
The vacant land in the back, is that residential?
Um, I think that's conservation, conservation land.
The one directly, this one's in the gray, the one directly to the west is actually a, that's actually more, it's a, it's a, it's empty in the back, but it's residential towards the front.
Yeah, I think there's a house.
Right, that butter was here last, last time, yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Number three, talked about adding a dimensional table showing all the requirements, and we have done that. We added a scheduled dimensional controls, talking about lot area frontage, front yard and building height. And we don't meet, as discussed before, we don't meet the frontage and the front yard, but it's a grandfather law.
I saw Ken's comments on that.
Ken did some research on that. Ken White, the building inspector, and what he sent you an email, right?
Yes, he sent me an email saying it's based on grandfather from back in, I think, 2002.
Ninety-nine, actually.
Ninety-nine, yeah.
I'm almost positive there was a ZVA decision on this law, I remember it distinctly. It was a variance of some kind for, maybe it was for the frontage issue. Did you?
No, it didn't actually.
Yeah, I mean, there definitely was. I just think that we called that.
Did they receive waivers at that time?
It was granted, but I'm not sure exactly what the issue was. I think, you know, it could have been, or, you know, setback.
But in any case, you had a control table anyway.
Yeah.
Well, then they, they put those two foundations in after the decision, so it must have been a favorable decision.
Number four, talks about the proposed driveway. We have, basically what we did with the driveway was we widened it to 24 feet.
Twenty-four feet.
Because that's what Mass DOT is going to require.
They're insisting on that?
Well, we haven't submitted plans yet, but from pretty good projects.
Wider than this one?
Yeah, they, they require 24 feet, just because.
This is about what, 16?
I mean, do you know that? I mean, you know, I mean, it seems like overkill, unfortunately, it cuts into your front yard, you know?
I think Larry's comments were that 16 is typical in a residential, but DOT usually requires a wider opening for retail.
What if you, does that placate the, it doesn't really help the fire department because the issue with them is turning around.
Turning around, yes.
So, that doesn't help them at all.
No.
Because they can easily get in on a 16 foot.
Can't you, can't you try getting something, you know, less by them?
Because you're a bad driver backing up.
Twenty feet or any way, 24 seems ridiculous.
It's a little wide.
I mean, it's.
It's a little wide.
It's not even that far off the road, I mean. I mean, if the DOT, I mean, we can.
Why would that matter if it's a little wider?
Well, aesthetically, I think it takes away from the project, I mean.
I agree.
It's a small, it's only a 2,200, it's like a house, it's like a single-family home.
Yeah, it just seems overkill.
And you can imagine, a single-family home's driveway is usually 12 to 14 feet.
Right.
So, you're taking like a single-family home-sized building and throwing a driveway that's twice as wide.
Can we recommend that it be 16 and also give the approval for the 24, if you can get this?
It's up to what the state gives.
Not less than 16?
Yeah, less than 16.
Or Cliff was saying, split the difference, go for 20.
Yeah.
Not less than 20, right?
Yeah, I was originally thinking 20, and then we sort of made a decision that typically the way they look at it is 12-foot lanes, so.
That is a state road, right? Outside there?
One A.
Yeah, yeah, that's state road, yeah, one A, yeah.
I see what you're saying.
Do they have requirements?
I mean, the way I think they look at, and I've worked in other, other states, they, if a car stopped here waiting for traffic, they want to make sure another car can pull off the road.
Exactly.
And so, you're not going to have a conflict there.
So, they can get around it right away without having to crash into?
Right. And hold up traffic on Main Street, so I think that's.
I don't see why there needs to be 24 feet wide.
Well, he just described why, again, they're thinking.
What, 20 feet wouldn't be wide enough?
The event that someone stalls up and someone's coming the other way, you don't back up traffic on 1A. I mean, that could happen anywhere.
Did you see Larry Graham's comment?
Coming out of Dulles, that could happen.
Yeah, about those.
Previously about straightening that out.
The road's 40 would widen there, so.
Coming out, it's about 24, I bet. Do you think, to get an example? I found that one, you think, on one side.
We're being by the, these two are savings, that side. Have you straightened it out? Well, that would make our side today, I don't know, it just seems weird.
I feel like going out before flare.
He didn't mention it.
Okay.
We did it.
Well, I don't know, I mean, why don't we?
Not backing up traffic.
It's really not our safe.
Right.
Well, if the state is really going to insist on 24 feet, then I guess that's, that's the end of it. But my, my comment is, can we try to get something more reasonable by the state and only go to 24 if they're really insisting on? I mean, they're not going to say that's too wide, they're going to, you know, just going to approve it.
But what, they're not going to prove, and you think they're not going to approve anything less because of what you just said.
Why can't you try, you know, to get something less than that approved, and if the state says no, then amend your plan and get it, you know?
Allow with that threat of project, though, you know what I mean? Try to get the state to give you an answer.
How about 20, huh?
There could be a couple of years.
But then, you're right, it might hold you up.
Well, you know, it's just.
It is what it is, you know?
Because you want that.
I'd prefer to have it, you know, 20 feet or.
Why don't we recommend 20, it's going to raise the board.
Why don't we, why don't we say it should be 20 unless the state requires a wider driveway?
That's what I meant, not.
Yeah, I agree.
Is that all right?
Time by day.
Okay.
I mean, as long as it doesn't delay them, you know.
It's not a supermarket.
No, it's, yeah.
You can green it anyway, you can call them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want you to get all, all the time, project, and the state come down and say, well, you know, we told you it had to be, you know.
Right, right.
All this such a big problem.
But that plan right there reflects 24.
That's 24 feet, yes.
Giant funnel. And does it have to be curvy like that? Can you, can you straighten that out? I think Larry's.
The reason we were doing that is typically because Mass DOT does not allow these radius returns to extend, so if you extended this property line out to the, to the road, they don't like that coming past, past that line, just in case this is a separate, say if this is sold later on.
So, the common ownership today doesn't really get you what you, where you need to be.
But it is uncommon ownership.
Oh, it's not, I'm sorry, I thought that was.
He owns it, but it's not in.
Well, no, it is common ownership, it's just that if they were, I mean, they're, if, just in case.
If it was sold, then you're not, yeah.
Right.
Then you create a non-conforming situation.
Right.
That's why, I see where, I see where it has to, like, intersect.
Because if they wanted a curb cut, they'd need to have the same radius, is that where, I mean?
Just because, just because I think the thinking is, yeah, you're eating up some of their space in case they want to do something out in front over here, you're sort of eating up the other properties.
She doesn't really pay attention to that Route 1, does she?
I don't, I don't mind.
Be many and stock, hasn't it?
Yeah, I think Route 1 is the one.
All right. And we labeled, we labeled the radiuses, I think, yeah, curb rate, curb cut radius have been labeled, and we added site distances. There's plenty of site distance, we have over 500 feet looking, looking south and over 1,000 feet looking north on Main Street. Comment five, talked about the labeling the parking aisle width and just miscellaneous radiuses, and we made all those changes, and actually, we made this, this radius a little bit bigger for, for turning movements into the parking lot. Number six, discussed about steps in front of the building, and also talked about the handicap ramp, and we added steps at both locations at the front of the building at both doorways, and I, I looked at the handicap ramp again and made sure that conformed to ADA specifications.
Was, was the slope too steep?
No, it was fine before, I just, I changed once, a couple of spot grades, but it was, you, you can go up to 8% and it was less than 8%.
Seven, it was 7.2.
Yeah, seven and a half. And I added a note basically saying that it's going to comply with ADA with rails.
You can't get it down lower so you can get rid of the handrails?
No.
No. It just, because of the two, I mean, it has to be.
If you get down around 5, I think you don't need the handrail anymore.
Yeah, I think you're right, if it's less than 5, you don't need handrails.
Is that also satisfying some of the fire department's concerns with the steps?
Um, it does, but he's still had a comment about, he's concerned about this handicap ramp, and I'm not really sure, I mean, we could sit down with him, but I'm not.
All right, so you're going to sit down and try to work that out?
Yeah, I don't really know what his concerns are, because I mean, if, I mean, it's a handicap ramp, so he's saying firefighters could get injured or something, but, I mean.
Okay.
Yep. But we'll, we'll sit down with him.
Label by the handicap, right?
I guess it's quicker just going up the steps and in versus maybe slipping and sliding on the ramp.
Right. And there are, I mean, and there are two front, you know, two entrances.
That's why I was talking about rails when I said, no, keep the rails. At least the rails would be an added feature for the firefighter.
Right, right.
On the other hand, the stairs to provide access to the rear of the building, are they behind, well, behind the handicap rail, or, I mean, you got to, got to be up at the back of the ramp to get in those stairs in any event, right?
Well, the only, yeah, the only access up to the back is through the ramp, and then, you know, the front is through steps.
I see, okay, but, so.
You took the ramp out in the front and just put steps?
Well, there was never a ramp, it's just that the steps weren't shown before, so.
But you did have kind of to meet the grade, didn't you have something?
No, the, the text plan, the door was into the foundation, it should be on the sill.
All right, and we'll talk about the past then, all right, so steps.
Yeah, we got stuff down. Let's see here.
I'm just, I'm just, you know, along the lines of what you're talking about earlier, you know, understanding what the fire department's concerns were, I, you know, it seems to be where if the only access is to come all the way down to the southerly side of the building, and then go around the rail and up to the building to get to the back, I think what the firefighters want is direct access from the parking lot into the, into the back of the building. I mean, if you can get the grade below 5, then would need the rail, so that they would have the ability to come up right into the building. But I don't, I mean, I know you've got, that's a challenge, I'm not sure that you can, but I think that that would.
That's another way to look at it.
Yeah, I mean, as it is right now, we don't know exactly what the finished floor is going to be, but there might actually have to, it might have to ramp up inside the building a little bit, just because of the finished floor, that's, that's how much of a difference that is.
Right, that, this issue may be answered or may be a different answer when your final architectural plans are done, aren't they?
Elevation is elevation, we already have the top of foundation, so we can change.
Entry point or something might change a little bit, or something like that, you know, but you know you're going to need a ramp back there, and you know you're going to need some steps, that's, to me, it's more of an architectural problem at this stage than a total site planning problem. And I think you do have to just answer the fire chief, I mean, I don't know if he's truly respecting handicap accessibility.
That's something that can be done.
Yeah.
And we'll find, we'll find out more before this, we're not going to get bogged down and speak of other departments, I think, all right.
Okay, number.
I still have a question mark on my page about it.
All right. Let's see here, number seven, oh, that was just to clarify that, Ed Sotheby owns the adjacent lot, which is now shown on there. Number eight, the, yeah, the gas and water services are insisting and, and have been shown on the plan, on the record conditions plan.
All right, you might as well segue into.
You could, you did, you, you did talk to Mary Beth.
Yes, I did.
About the water, and you got me an email about what she had said about upgrading the lateral.
Just what Ed wanted to hear.
It is what it is.
Right, about adding another service line, so I think we're, we're probably going to just tie in.
What does she mean by that? Can you extract, can you?
Well, it's, it's currently set up for residential.
It's eight, but it's eight inch, wasn't it?
No, no, it's probably, it's probably if it's a.
Oh, you're talking about the little one? Is it one inch coming in?
Yeah, the one-inch service.
Oh, it's one inch, that makes sense, all right.
So, she's concerned about.
Oh, just coming, I was thinking on the street.
No.
Streets fine.
The service a bit, the service.
Streets fine.
Yeah, the street's fine.
Is the one-inch going to service both tenants, or just?
Well, that's what she was concerned about.
I, I thought it could, I didn't see why it couldn't, but if we need to put around another line, I will.
That's not, that's not such a huge deal.
No.
Most cases, commercial uses use less water, maybe a salon will use more, but.
A salon, I can't imagine they're going to use much next door, whatever the tenant is.
So, she'll ask for one, at least one and a half or two?
We should probably get her specification.
She'll give you.
Well, well, she was.
Who is she, I'm sorry?
Mary.
Water superintendent.
Yeah, the water.
And she also made a comment that if we only have one water service coming into the building, there's only going to be one water meter, and she was sort of, didn't know if that's what Ed Sotheby wanted for, if you're only going to have one meter for the, for both tenants, they'd have to split the water bill.
It's up to the landlord, you know.
You can do sub-meters or.
It'd be better to kind of sub-meter, have two, it's easier, especially with one use being so disparate from the other unit.
I think one inch is enough.
That's not for you, you run the one and a half.
I go through this all the time.
They got to wrestle with Ellen Beth, because she just came on board, you know.
The run is only like 30, 40 feet, 45 feet, there's plenty of push, you know? It's not like it's 200 feet of one.
Forty feet from the eight-inch main to the house, is what you're saying.
I don't know if it's eight or six, I know they tie it into the T at the.
It says eight inches, so I don't know, but.
Yeah. It is what it is.
All right, so you're going to, you're going to follow through with?
Yeah.
All right.
I'll probably get something from her tomorrow. Okay. She just wasn't able to get to me.
Do we have to have a note on that or anything, or is that just this, like you said, architecture?
Which one's the architecture?
No, no, we need a note on that?
I don't know what the other size is going to be, but just.
No, is there any note on the size in the water?
Um, no, I don't have a note on there, no.
No, we don't really need that, okay, that's more of a spec.
Right, I don't think.
It actually says to show the what, like utility, like utilities on the, on the plan, so.
You can show the existing line.
Yeah, well, it showed the existing line, but I guess the proposed connections, right? Is that not required as part of the site plan?
I think so.
So, the existing have been added to sheet one, so what do you have, is this sheet one?
Whoa.
Want to see what you have on sheet one?
Yeah, but basically, his comment was, see, the, the gas and the water, I did not have shown on this plan before, so I just added them to this plan, so now they're shown on both.
Well, it's important to really have it on the site plan.
Yeah.
For the record of where the gas and water.
Right, so now, I think it satisfies his comments.
Anybody who grabbed the plan and had to.
The top one's gas.
Yeah, the top one's gas, and that's the water.
I guess your comment, Kirk, he's going to look whether or not, they need to be specced out on it. Yeah, why don't you just, I mean, you should spec it out when you know. And the gas line is a, is this typical schedule, whatever, gas line. And then, with the water, you don't usually put, what do you do on your other plans? You put one inch, do you, if it's a sprinkler, do you put six inch, I mean, what do you do?
Well, yeah, we call it size, typically, yeah. Well, yeah, we call it size typically, yeah. So I can do that.
And it's important if someone's excavating to know what's there, right?
He'll excavate there and believe me, he'll be old.
Well, no, I, it's, sometimes things, sometimes.
Why excavate?
It's good to know, sometimes mistakes can be, they cost money.
It doesn't seem to specifically ask for, like.
What, what the size is?
Yeah, the size, but, I mean, I guess the location of, of each, of each lateral.
You're right, is there a W that I can't see?
Yeah, there's Ws and Gs, yeah.
All right, let's just leave it at that, it doesn't call for it, because he doesn't know.
Just move on.
All right, he doesn't know, right.
But it, it does, I would do the point out, it, I mean, it's part of the approval of attitude, the, the board has to assess the adequacy of methods for water supply. So if the water department is good, so I guess.
You know that.
That's my determination.
All right, so number nine talks about signage and we're just gonna wait until, I mean, a sign permit will be submitted.
Are you gonna, um, apply for a salon sign?
I anticipate doing that.
But if you don't have another tenant, why does it say here you're kinda waiting? I mean, why are you waiting? Because it says a sign permit will, a sign permit's filed in order to determine who the second tenant will be.
Actually, we probably need to do it for.
For the first.
Get your salon one out of the way, right?
And have an.
File for the.
Open space.
And have an open space or some sort of.
Do you have to file for a second occupant?
But you can plan your signage for the.
For the second tenant, they got filed for signage.
Do you know what, where it's going?
If they're both on the same placard, do they have to have a second permit?
No, no, for signage.
Oh, right.
Not from planning.
Yeah, you do it for special permit, yeah.
You might from.
All right, and that's up to you, I'm just trying to clarify what you wrote here, that's it.
And it's not illuminated, correct? Like, there's not gonna be any illuminated signs, right?
Otherwise you'd anticipate that.
Okay, if you do, it's a special permit.
Right.
All right, just, I would, I would suggest you just.
Do it now.
Just get it over with, well, you know, right away, but I'm saying, don't wait till the second tenant.
Right.
Otherwise you'll be built in the spring or summer or whatever you're done while the next fall. And you won't have your sign permit.
Right, okay.
I mean, there's plenty of time. I mean, I don't know when you plan on building, even when, probably as soon as you get your appeals, if the weather's.
On the weather, yeah.
Uh, number ten talks about lighting and we provided, well, we were adding a, a light in the back here, a wall mounted light. And we provided a specification sheet for that.
You said that's a cutoff?
Yeah, that's full cutoff for, um, yeah.
Yeah, Kirk mentioned that, it was all right, too.
Yeah, they submitted the, the spec sheet for.
Okay, it's in Kirk's thing, okay.
And number eleven, um, basically talked about adding another, showing an inch and a half of pavement for the top course, based on Larry's comment, which we now show on our detail, an inch and a half.
All right, and that redundancy has been removed on twelve.
Yep, we removed that detail. Number thirteen, hand order information has been added for the test pit, you know that. Number fourteen, we added the height of the trees to the plant schedule, so now we have a, a size of installa-, at installation and then a height and a maturity for the plantings. And number fifteen was basically already taken care of before, it was just about the, the walkway to the front access door.
Was that misreading of the plan, is what you're saying?
And you're well on your, what the, you are subject to stormwater management because you triggered the twenty thousand.
Yes.
Larry commented that, um, of a storm manag-, storm water management case.
Yeah.
Yeah, on today, on today's.
Yeah, I, I had talked to Larry and I asked him to review it in accordance with that, with the storm law by law.
All right, so if you go to Larry's, we'll go to today's, which came in basically at six o'clock this evening. In any case, the applicant also responded to Brent Basile's email, so you can read that. So that, that was before, this is now. Yeah, Brent. Brent doesn't have, so. The conserva-, the bottom line, conservation department did comment on it today. As since the conservation commission through Brent. We know it triggers it, that's point number one by Brent. The planning board technical review include compliance, storm water management erosion control bylaw. In order to, you know, facilitate closing the hearing. Proposed basin should incorporate the addition of a silt marker post in the basin bottom in order to measure accumulation of sediment to provide a visible marker, basically to facilitate the maintenance, right?
Yes.
Twenty increments in the post so indicate inappropriate buildup. Conservation commission is no further concerned relating to this proposal. And I look forward to receipt of a storm water management erosion control bylaw. So you have to submit that?
Yeah, we're, we're not file, uh, what I planned was to, if we get planning board approval, then it's an expedited.
I know, right.
Process, so that's what he recommended.
Correct?
Yeah, for the storm water.
Yeah, that's been something they've been doing for a while now. You know, kind of doing things concurrently, just out, they don't have to be in sequence, so it's, I mean, I mean, all of it's.
Right.
Anybody, have you had a chance to, I know it's late, have you looked at Larry's kind of second review?
Yeah, I did, I did read through that, yes.
Uh, do you have any comments on it? It's not a very long review, it's kind of been narrowed down.
Yeah, pretty much.
It's been pared down. The, the first point on the grandfathering has been settled through some, since the last review by Larry. So, an A and R plan does not guarantee zoning compliance, the building inspector stated ten twenty if a lot is grandfathered, respect is only non-conformity. All right, number two.
To, well, to that point though, I mean, I know we have Ken Ward's comment that he looked at the jacket and he saw that there was a variance granted ninety-nine, but it seems like, if you recollect, something different. I mean, shouldn't we at least take a look at that variance?
Yeah, that's what I suggested, I think, you know, unless I'm.
You'll bring that up to Ken's.
Oh, yeah.
Right, I know, Kirk's gonna bring us to Ken's attention.
Okay.
I spoke to Ken today.
What happened was, when they did the sub, when Peter Sofford did the original subdivision back in ninety-eight, they laid out the subdivision, one hundred feet of frontage plus or minus. There's a, there's a discrepancy right on the, see the dotted line between Ipswich and Raleigh?
Yes, sure.
That's no man's land. The, the, the original engineer put the lot line to that dotted line. As it turns out, that wasn't correct. So this lot needed four feet of frontage to make it the hundred.
Okay.
So what they did was, they took this lot line, they added five, they took five feet off of the back here and added the five feet here. So the line just, you know.
Follows a different angle, but.
That's all. So they gave them a hundred and four feet of frontage out here and this didn't matter in the back. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
They just, they moved the lot line from there.
Right.
To there.
Yeah, they recall that.
Okay.
I hope I'm not sending on a wild goose chase, but I do recall the ZBA decision.
I didn't have it, I think.
Because that's all that the building inspector has.
Larry doesn't have a problem with the curb return, it's previously drawn in Montreal. Number two, you want, because we already said the driveway is, has this curve, so. And you, so you're gonna keep the curb, do you mean Larry?
Yeah, I mean, I think as of right now, we're gonna keep it, what we're showing, what we're showing on the plans.
To facilitate approval?
Yes.
By the mass DOT.
Correct.
But we don't have an objection if it was raised, and we don't have a board, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Number three, he just wants, um, test pit, the actual test pits conducted, which we can do.
You agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine. And then number four, he's basically, well, yeah, there was a drafting error on here. I'm, I'm showing curb in the back here, but this is, this is supposed to be just sheet flow off the parking lot into the infiltration basin, so I'm gonna remove that line.
That doesn't make much sense, right?
Right. And he recommended a gravel, peystone area in the back here.
Larry made a little bit of an error, I know, I think it's an institution for savings, isn't it?
Oh, I think you're right.
Ipswich Cooperative Banks Building, they've been the institution.
Didn't they merge? It was Ipswich Co-op when they permitted.
But if people are wondering where we have the successful kind of, what's the word? Less inter.
Low impact.
Yeah, low impact, thanks. It really works well at institution for savings.
So what, so what keeps a car from rolling into your brakes?
We have parking, we have those concrete parking wheel stops.
Okay, and the water comes in.
Yeah.
Humor is still bigger.
You know, one thing that, first when I read this, this suggesting that they use the P gravel diaphragm along the, the rear edge and then in conjunction with the conversation we had about how wide the, the curb cut needs to be, is it possible they can use some of the peystone, say, three feet on either side and therefore narrow the, the driveway to.
To minutes?
You know, that way you'd, you know, save some of the aesthetics, you'd have the safety of having the extra space if it was, you know, emergency. I mean, I don't know if that's appropriate, but.
Yeah.
Well, people are doing that, it's expensive, it's more expensive, these, um, like you'll see in, like in Linfield at these rotaries, you know, where they do the pavers with peystone. They're basically, it makes a pervious area that they can capture what some storm water credit on.
Right, right, right.
They capture credit on these, on these paved areas, so you have partially paved, but people can drive over, but it's, it's impervious. I mean, it's pervious. So that, it serves both purposes, on either side, and it's prettier.
I was thinking aesthetically primarily, but, you know, I also was, thought it would have the added benefit of costing a little less.
What is the difference between paving and throwing those in? You know, the brick, you know.
Yeah, but paving.
The concrete, there are, it can be colored, yeah, I mean, they can be colored any way you want. They're showing up more and more in areas, people sometimes don't know what to do, should we drive over them or not?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I'm not sure in terms of the cost, ah, yeah, I'd have to look that up.
I don't know, but I think paving would be cheaper.
I just don't know the, I mean, I don't know.
I'm just guessing.
It's showing up, but you can see it aesthetically, it's quite. And that's a good.
I just, you know, I, the four foot opening seems really.
The piece don't, I don't think they'll allow, because you'll be, there's nothing to keep it from being damaged.
Right, plumbing and everything else.
Yeah, sure.
So we'll, so we're gonna go ahead and make those, you know, fix the curving and, and then he wanted some additional details of a vegetated filter strip, so I'll make those changes.
Yep.
Then number five.
You can skip five and six, we already know them.
Yeah, and then seven, oh, we got handicap ramp.
That one, too.
Yep, and eight, he basically agrees that it meets the storm water management rules.
All right. Now, um, a little bit of a fly in the ornament, I guess David, David, well, not really fly, but I mean, are you looking to get any historical commission?
I'm in front of them, meet with them again, is it the fourth or the seventh?
Is that a prerequisite for?
Well, architectural compatibility is what.
It's just a criteria.
Yeah, but in terms of, I think the, if, if the historic commission were to, I guess, make design decisions that effectively.
I think we should, I would rather wait, I would rather wait because the clock starts ticking when we close the year.
Yeah, I think we should wait.
Yeah, so, do you want to comment on that? I mean, it's really not, I mean, you want, you were at the thing, so.
Well, I think with the historic commission, I mean, the footprint of the building and associated land around the building is not gonna be affected by the planning decision. But the building is the building, you know, whatever design they approve, the footprint isn't any bigger or smaller than what it is.
Well, I think, you know, it is within our purview to consider architectural issues, which is what you were saying, I heard.
Yeah, architectural compatibility is a, one of the, you know, criteria.
Which is why we have public hearings.
My idea, I thought in, in, in terms of permitting, the permitting process, I was talking.
No, I mean, that's, that's included, and that's why we end up in many cases, I mean, we have an architect in the board, like if you look at the Village Green down the street and the country club, many even downtown.
Yeah, it's a big one.
There was a lot of, I think we ended up because of that process, ending up with much better looking buildings than what were originally put before this board, right?
The interesting issue.
Especially Village Green and, I mean, the final, the final product and, and compromise, you know, the final product was better because of the, you know.
But you have to go before the historic commission anyway, so we're not, we're not gonna hold you up.
You can't get a building permit.
That meeting is next, uh, fourth, but it may be postponed for one week.
Because we can make up the time in the COV, right? You know, even though we have ninety days to issue it, but it typically doesn't take ninety days, unless it's a really complicated one.
The, the interesting issue that came up in historic was uniformly, the Ipswich people and the board found that the building appears to be big and everybody knows what the foundation size is, so it was an issue that, Ed's daughter is the architect, you know, she's going back and looking at it, and I think everybody will come to a good conclusion. But this mass of the building for some reason just looks big, bigger than what it could possibly be.
She initially.
Look, is that what you're saying?
No, he's, I think he might have used Bentley Depot or something, but.
Well, I mean, she initially had a, a seven pitch roof and I said, that's not enough around here, you know, we shot on the roof off.
You're right.
You know, so that's why we went with nine, that was the only reason.
It's more than that, it just, for some reason looked big. But it, it, in reality, it probably isn't that big, but it's just the way it looked on paper.
Well, it can't be if it's going on that foundation.
Yeah, that was gonna be a single family house.
But sometimes these things happen, but I think we had, the historic meeting was a good positive meeting in the end.
So how, what was the, the resolution?
They're going back to the drawing wood and come up with new ideas and.
But they didn't like, you get the sign?
What's that?
Well, they didn't like the, the, the look of the roof, right?
It broke down. Well, that's what I'm getting, that's what I'm getting from the memo, that kind of started the.
They didn't like the train depot concept.
I guess clam box would be.
Look at something that fits in.
You know what I mean? My daughter come up with an idea, I said, yeah, let's run with it, you know. Oh, well.
Well, it's a good learning experience.
Yeah, I mean, I thought it was pretty nice, I mean.
Do you, um, speaking of architectural issues or just engineering, are you going to do the test on the foundation?
Yeah. Uh, yeah.
To take care of the, again, it's not a site plan review, but just a note for the board that.
I looked at it.
The building inspector is concerned.
I looked at it when I was out there digging around and I didn't see anything.
No, it's fine.
However.
I'm not concerned about it.
I mean, I think it's, yeah, but I'm just saying the building inspector, well, issue building permits.
Needs a note in this file.
Well, most, most of, I think the four thousand PSA, most of foundations.
Well, one of the problems that happens is because it isn't protected, something.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, you know, the best thing for concrete is being exposed.
Yeah, you know.
It takes a hundred years for concrete to completely dry. Ask the Romans.
On that note, on that note, all right, 7:30, when's the next meeting? I think we're pretty much, we're there pretty much, if you, conditional, when, when are they going before? You said when? December 4th?
Just the first week in December on the Wednesday.
What's that, what's that, is that over there?
I think it's gonna be postponed, it'll probably be December 11th.
What day do they meet?
The third, they meet on Thursday, right?
It might be, it might be.
It was the 4th.
Is that the 10th? They'll meet on the 10th?
Fourth, 11th, so anything.
11th. So the 11th, will they vote then if it's sufficient? Will they have a chance to vote? Did they get that far?
It depends on how fantastic.
Like plans.
How fantastic Jennifer.
But I still think we probably should meet.
I'm gonna have to do 18th.
We should meet on the 17th after historical, right? Is that right? You'll be packed if you need it. Just, they will be, you can wear layers where you're going. 17th, is that all right?
Oh, no.
Is that okay?
Yeah, it's fine.
Rather do it afterwards than we know, and we conclude. You know, then we are in a better position to close.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, thank you for making all the changes, I think, and cooperation. Also, touch, you know, give you time to circle back to the fire department, those little glitches.
Sit down with them and meet, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to continue this to December 17th?
Second.
At 7:30?
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, sorry, I didn't say second, what was David, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is continued to the 7:30 on Thanksgiving, 17th. There's a gavel, I need a gavel, I don't know. I need the auditory cue, have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Now, switch to. It's a similar kind of set of documents. I think we need to also refer to, well, you'll have time, after time. Kirk prepared a pretty nice analysis today, based on some new information, information they got. Kirk did an evaluation criteria for this one as well, but he gave it to you at the last minute, so make sure. It's important to refer to that now and then, in conjunction with Larry's stuff.
In a way, it really kinda covers the same stuff Larry covers, just more for helping to write the COB in the air.
Expand it, yeah.
Kirk. Everybody's shaking, Larry's.
19?
Yeah.
Did you hear today?
Yeah. The whole department and also evaluations.
This would all be the B section, please? Is it B section?
Yeah, it's all.
With the exception of the comments that I can get today from Larry and Kirk. I'll be still looking for yours. The last one. A lot of stuff, evaluation criteria for 56.
You guys probably haven't gotten the copy, well, I gave you a co, well, I gave you actually the copies.
Yeah.
And what, Larry's? Do they have copies? You both have copies? We just gave you, two page, one, just two pages?
Yeah, yeah.
Evaluation criteria.
Oh, I thought that was the one. Who was the one that just?
David Maia Coop.
What?
All right, that's fine, just look around, it's new anyway, okay, because it's not gonna be that, as, it's not that important as getting to the meat of some of the other issues. It's continued public hearing for 56, nobody forward, turns right. We have a couple of reviews from one day to the September 23rd and one day today. We also have information about stormwater management. Again, this, we have, oh, here it is. Information that was discussed at the other meeting, but not in much detail. And we have a response since the last meeting where we have responded, what, October 24th? About some of the uses. And I wanna point out to the board that we're looking at a site plan of new course for an individual project, a building, you know, for a particular use of what, 5,000 square feet?
Yeah, 5,000 square.
Up on the hill, on a site that has previously developed, although this is a standalone site review for that building and use. Okay, so I don't, there are some other issues on the site, but I wanna make sure that we're focusing on the site plan review for the site in terms of stormwater management and landscaping and, and the criteria for traffic and so forth. And then we can kinda maybe, Kirk is the somebody else's of our bible, and talk with the inspector. And that is, you know, for next meeting, you can read Kirk's analysis in his evaluation criteria that he gave us today. But I think in terms of some of the other criteria that we use for site plan review, a number of those have kind of been knocked out of the way already. But some other issues still remain, based on the reading of Larry's. Now, so, to proceed, I mean, Kirk, I mean, how do you, we can't cut to the chase here. I mean, have you?
Doesn't, if I can.
Sure, yeah, that's, I'm.
Doesn't Larry essentially say that the plans should be resubmitted because they're inadequate for several reasons? Several major reasons, I mean, seems to have.
Well, you might infer that from it, but he's.
Well, he says, you know, we're not satisfied with the revised plans and have the following comments, and you know, stormwater management standards must be addressed, but you know.
If you wanna file, I guess I wanna, I gotta hear from you first, because you're, you're in here for.
Here with Mark, for Claywater Environmental.
Yeah. What was, Tom, right? Tom, you have a card, Tom?
I don't have a card, sorry.
Who was, who was there, what, who was this, was there before? Liz, I couldn't even get her, Liz Dupre, right?
Yes.
All right, so tell me what you're doing and where you're at, and response to, just so we can kind of, we're starting to collect some documents and comments. We need to clean, you need to start responding from both, you know, point by point.
Right.
Can't obfuscate it with, like, that's why I tried to point out, we need to focus on this site plan right now.
Right. Yeah, I was on the assumption that we just had a submittal for a light, are you gonna submit something today?
I'll go ahead and a little something, but I'm gonna get to these, I imagine.
Okay. So, I, I thought everything was addressed, so I guess I go point by point. He's saying it's not a redevelopment project. The roof area would not be considered redevelopment, but we are meeting the strict standards of the DEP stormwater requirement. We infiltrate, and we provide an operation maintenance manual. So if you go point by point, the standards have been met, he doesn't, he isn't saying which standards.
Well, no, yeah, he does, so, just to give an example, a quick calculation, 5,000 square foot roof area only for the design. Now, remember, he does these, we do how many, I mean, he's our review agent for, you know, the hydro calculations and the hydraulic.
Yep.
Submittal, hydraulic, you know, analysis, and even in a two-year event, you're not even close. The plan's proposed, unless your plans have changed, propose 200 square, 200 linear feet of infiltration trench, one and a half feet deep by three feet. Using a 35% void ratio, available volume in this trench would be 315 cubic feet. This available volume is well below any of the storm events, which means that the difference would have to be recharged, infiltrated, and so is below. On the surface, this rate of infiltration will likely not occur over time as the trench becomes clogged during deep frost periods and during the peak of rain event periods. We recommend the engineer revisit the proposed drainage system and calcs before we look at them in greater depth. Do you agree or disagree with that as an engineer?
Well, I'm disagreeing how he's going about this, because I, I mean, we submitted the calcs back in July, I thought he was okay with this, so.
Where's he saying, where does he ever say he was okay with it?
I, I don't know, it just.
Thinking is not, unless you can give me something in writing where he's okay with it, that's not.
Yeah, well.
I mean, you need to follow, that's where the burden is, and we just went through a project where each issue was addressed according to issues that were brought up, and they were reflected in plans, number one, and they were reflected in, you know, calculations and, and. So the plans reflected exactly what needs to be done, not, I think they need, the think is not, we can see them, they're addressed. I don't see a memo from you addressing, where's the memo from you guys addressing?
This is.
There's a memo addressing some of the uses, that's a good memo, no.
Keep in mind, this was just submitted today, so.
It's a September 23rd memo that.
No, it's not gonna take long, I mean, the conservation commission, we are the board that has to make sure the stormwater management's, yeah, that's all.
He, I don't know, it's not on the September 23rd.
All right, so go ahead.
Okay, so, he's basing upon volumes, and what I based mine is on a stormwater calculation based upon the type 3 stormwater, 24 hour stormwater event. So I can go back and take a look at this, and then, and point by point, maybe, you know, perhaps increase it anyways, just to, just to make everything smoother. But the calculations that I provided show that it meets the 100 year storm event, the type 3 24 hour event. So, right.
Why the disparity? So what's the difference, I mean, I know it's kind of an engineer to engineer thing, and I.
Yeah, it's too bad that Larry's not here tonight, but I think we need Larry, I think we need, you need to have a discussion with Larry.
Yeah, if you explain, I mean, Larry's very, he's reasonable if you explain the criteria, I mean, he'll back, you know, he'll change it.
Sure, I'm, I'll even call him if you want. What I think he's getting at is that he's, he's doing a quick calc saying.
He says it was a quick calc, yeah.
Yeah, based upon, you know, storage, what I think you need is based, so we calculate how much roof runoff is coming in one shot. So this is how much storage you need, and yet you only have 300, 315 cubic feet, more or less, which I'm not sure if, that, it could be correct, 315.
Yeah, so, about 315 cubic feet storage volume in your trench.
How is this infiltrate, and then, then he's saying that perhaps in the wintertime it's gonna freeze, and you're not gonna get the flow. All right, given that, yeah, we could give that an increase, but right now, it needs stormwater requirements. If he's, if he's putting in freezing thawing issues, okay, I'll, I'll grant him that, I'll, I'll add some more to it. I, I think I used a very conservative number for the infiltration rate, based upon the lonely sands that we found. I think I might, I might have used eight inches, so. So I can go back, I can go back and adjust that, but I, I provided calcs.
I will also just be, because I have some, I mean, I might wanna look at that report myself. And I'll talk to Larry too.
Okay.
I just wanna, because you're so far off, even on the two-year span, there has to be a median, I mean, it, it, you're far off because of just the approach, you know?
Right.
You're, you're taking a different methodology, really, right?
I'm using, I'm using HydroCAD, which is, it's.
He's using a methodology.
He's, he's using, he's using a quick calc, we're gonna just calculate in storage, storage off the roof versus storage in the ground. And I use a HydroCAD, which is based upon an actual theoretical stormwater event over 24 hours, where you're gonna have a, you know, you're gonna have a burst of rain and then in some sort of burst of rain, you know, and then, so you're gonna get some flushing, you're gonna get some ability to infiltrate, and you'll have some storage as well. So he's, he's basing it on storage.
But at the same time, I think he's a little questioning infiltration. Well, actually, the perk test, would that have been the infiltration, the perk test?
Well.
I don't, I don't. That'll be a soil, that'll be a soil, no, it is, it is a soil test. You do a soil test before you design it.
Yes, that's what they, we have some depot stock up there. And some people do use perk tests, but I don't think it's helpful.
And that's part of it, the revised plans are now providing overloads, this is kind of in the same theme here. Do not provide an over, this is number three, do not provide an overflow system from the infiltration trench to the existing drainage system in the lower side of the site.
Yes, I, I commented on that before, his, his comment from before, where he was suggesting to connect, and, and I would, I wouldn't go against connecting to the mass highway storm system, if that's what he's getting at.
No, it isn't what he's getting at. You have a drainage syst, well.
A drainage system on the others.
But you also, don't you have kind of a trench next to the highway there? Well, there's a retention bond.
You got a little detention bond there, right front? Or he's talking about that system.
He's talking about that, he could.
Well, don't, I mean, don't we need Larry here, or?
Yeah, we do. But I wanna, I wanna expose some of these officials in the plan. So if there was anything extra, could it just be plumbed, I could, I expand that, I don't know, trench, what's that thing out front, the retention? Well, these are questions that I think you're. If it even needs it. Because if he did a quick calc, that's just kinda like, when I go to an auction, I look at something, I just do, oh, I think it's worth that. Come and I look it up and do the numbers, it shows everything. All right, so I want you, you can do that, call Larry on that one too.
Yeah.
Get him on the phone, you guys have a cell phone for him or something?
No.
I called him like a hundred times, never get it. No, I, no, no provisions are proposed to channel stormwater runoff from the upper portion of the site in the paved driveways to the existing drainage facilities. In addition to that, I think he's saying that you can control stormwater runoff better if consideration is given to paving both access driveways to the upper portion. Again, that's strong consideration, that's not something that is in that, you know, like a. That's, that's not a metric, I'm interested, but.
Yeah, so number two, yeah, we, we show the steeper existing driveway to be paved up to the.
No, it's to the trench right now already. And, uh, number six here, comments nine and 10 of our September 23rd review from Larry have not been addressed. On your October memo, you did address up through.
Okay, so nine, I think, says the existing drainage system needs to be clearly detailed. Is that what he's saying?
Let me look at it, you guys have.
That's what it says, yeah.
Yeah, you read it to me, I don't have it, okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, yeah, so the details of the existing drainage system, you know, for the information in the field, verified information we have were labeled on the plans. And there might have been some unknown.
Okay, we'll leave it, I just, I'm just bringing up his initial, again, that's, that's something to address.
And then number ten is the, oh, okay, the orientation.
Yeah, I think we looked at it, I just, it's, it won't, it won't fit in the bank card. Yeah, we'll see it from the road, I'm trying, you don't wanna see the building from the road, you wanna see trees, I would imagine.
I think Liz commented on that too, and that was based upon, yeah, the site.
Yeah, alright, so you're gonna put that in writing as well?
Yeah, I believe, I believe she already commented on it, but I, we.
No, I can't keep, and I'll do her, I can't keep having them believe in.
I don't have the letter in front of me, so.
Cause I'm looking at her letter here.
Well, her letter says, it, it stops at nine, it doesn't actually have a ten or eleven.
That's, that's why, that's his point, yeah. And I appreciate it in the future that, in the response, make, you know, if you include, you can put Larry's, or just cut and paste or something, so it's right there, cause it'll make it easier for Mark as well, you know? Because if Mark gets, if Mark gets this, a lot of work went into this. If, if Mark gets it and just sees what it refers to, then he knows, cause right now it's just one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and it doesn't reference Larry's comment. I mean, it kind of does, but, you know, you know what I mean? It's just easier to, other, other words, it's kind of a blind, you know, where we're shuffling and going back and forth. It doesn't make it easier for the board, let's see if that works.
Otherwise, it'd cross-reference everything.
Is that alright? And that helps us close things out.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure she, next time she.
And it's easier for you, cause look, cause you're coming in after she, on her memo, you know?
Right, yeah, I had it live.
What are we supposed to know about the building that's coming up here?
If you look at, you submitted, Mark, have you looked at Mark's?
I've looked at it.
Alright, so let's, yeah, you wanna get.
Can't read the dimensions, I, I know vaguely.
Let him finish up on, so what are you, kind of, like, are you gonna follow up on these things? And have it, and have it for the next meeting?
Yes.
Cause I wanna move along in this project, but.
You know, I, I do need to talk to him, because I think it's kind of, I say it's, it's all set regarding the, you know, the D E P stormwater system, and he says, no.
Well, no, I'm not gonna go there right now, okay?
No, I was gonna say, that's why I need to follow up.
We need our engineer here, or else a memo from him saying that he gives satisfied his concerns, that's, that's it, and I guess that's it, well.
I see six comments here.
I guess not, really. Cause I think Kirk knocked out, if you look at Kirk's analysis.
I haven't seen anything, I don't know.
Well, I'm just saying, Kirk, no, and you're, and in respect in track, we're going through all the criteria that we have for you, that come right out of, you know, the bylaw.
Right.
And Kirk has done that for you, he's done a lot of the work for you, so, do you have any other major concerns?
Well, I guess the, I guess one of the other big concerns that we didn't, we haven't really talked about, and because we had them address, to talk about the, the uses that were on, that were going on on the property, and I know Larry had pointed it out in his original, his original letter, and I've been talking to the building inspector, officially, about how we should approach that, as far as this is concerned, and it just, and I, I think until, until we actually, we're gonna have to like, look at this as being, the site plan review as being separate, and that as being a zoning compliance issue, which, you know, as far as the, as far as the Bay Road auto sales issue, that's all been dealt with, with the release of that bond, that surety, having to do with the landscaping, really that any kind of compliance that had to do with that approval, it would have had to been, it would have had to been dealt with at the time, basically the business license, like the license for the whole cell auto was, was issued.
Right, so that closed out.
Well, I, I tend to disagree a little bit with that, because, I mean, I think that the, the release of the bond was based on compliance with the, the special permit that allowed the site plan.
No, based on the criteria.
That was on, that was just on landscape.
Landscape, yeah.
Landscaping, yeah, landscape.
Okay, fine, but the, that, that permit also limited the use of the property to, to sixty vehicles, by, you know, my own estimation, there's a hundred and fifty vehicles on that property.
Okay, but that, that's what I said, that's why I prefaced this meeting, this hearing, okay? This can be revisited, but I'm not gonna, Kirk's, what he's trying to say, read his analysis, based on the zoning enforcement officers, the building inspector, and we'll work, we work closely together.
Can I just ask what you would want me to do?
Well, no, that's why.
I know, I just wanna know, you want, you want something, just tell me what you want.
Let me, let me.
Let Kirk finish, you know?
Just that, because while we, while the board, we had asked, while the board had asked Mr. Savery last time was to actually list the uses in his, in the response, and say which uses are going on right now, and what are they, what vehicle trips.
And that's in the October twenty-fourth memo?
Yeah, and, and so, I think, based on what Liz's letter, Liz's response, three of the uses that are actually out there are the three landscaping contractors that are actually going to go into this.
Contractors, yeah, they're not all landscapers, yeah.
Okay, the, the letter makes it.
They're like contractors that you.
Basies and every.
They can potentially consolidate and have this building out there.
So, it actually explains in the.
I had to give him discounted rate, but.
In the letter, what, what they're, each one is an individual, they don't have employees.
Yeah, they're all women.
Pickup trucks, and the, the materials consist of like metal staging, cement, and tools.
Yes.
And that's it, so, that's what they're explaining as far as, three, three of those uses that are, are going on that property right now.
There's no storage of like fertilizer or any of that stuff.
Yeah, nothing like that, but the other, and the other uses was, one was a landscape contractor, and the, let me actually take a look here, chariot landscaping was one of them, of the other uses that's outside, that, I guess is taking place up on, in the higher area.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but, that's already a use, you're saying that these uses, I go back to the nineteen seventies.
Well, not chariot personally, those are uses, he's always had.
Okay, so, when, when did that use begin?
I'd have to call my father in Florida, I don't know.
Okay, you, um, in terms of a zoning compliance issue, then you, you're probably going to need to like affirm that in some way with some kind of documentation, that, that.
Well, I should be told, I should go to the building inspector, see if he's the one that decides this, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, somebody say, there has to be kind of written documentation, if I, if I understand you right, could, that, for grandfathering or some other kind of.
Yeah, I think.
Something like that, because right now, we're kind of in a void, you know?
But isn't that a building inspector arena, I mean, that's a zoning enforcement.
No, but we can't make recommendations to the building inspector.
I think right now, the building inspector is not seeing these as being zoning compliance issues, because they, he sees them as being grandfathered.
Oh, well.
And.
Because they've existed for so long, however.
And that, and that's his call, it's not our call, and if.
I think, but Chris, but I think, you know, Chris brings up an excellent point, and that's something that we seriously need to consider before the next meeting, in terms of, you know, not some of these other, since the seventies, whatever, but what we have. And again, we're not connecting the two, because we wanna get the site plan review done with this, with this building, right? But we have concern, but we have concerns that, and that we're on-site visits, and our review engineer made obvious calls and obvious comments, that we can refer this back, and then we can try to maybe work to find out, you know, and then work with you, because you made that comment, like, what do you want me to do? We're not an enforcement body per se, we're not, there's zoning enforcement officers, but we're in, we're in advisory capacity, because we work closely together.
Yes.
He asks us for information, we ask him for information, is that, I mean, so, I think, you have to, you have to demarcate the two.
This client is asking for new things on a site that looks somewhat crappy up here, and I cannot separate the new thing from the way the site has been treated, and who's gonna say that the site appears not like that?
No, I'm just telling you, as chairman, we have a site plan review for a five thousand square foot building, we can discuss this, and we need to bring this up, and I'm gonna allow you to bring it up. However, he has the permit to operate a business down below, and that permit has been issued based on the criteria from a previous board decision, and that's that, but if those aren't.
But he's asking for a new.
If those aren't being adhered to, that's a building inspector issue that has to be addressed, and I'm gonna leave it at that right now, we're gonna be continuing this, and I think Kirk has done some analysis, we'll continue to do it, and, you know, cause we're not closing the area tonight, so.
There again, you said you, you really didn't like the looks, tell me what.
Well, no, I don't wanna, I don't wanna digress, what I do want to, I wanna keep, no, I wanna keep it specific, cause now David brought, yeah, David brought a good point up earlier, he asked, this is why we're here, to ask questions, asked, cause you submit information to us, and David wants to ask a question about it.
Well, the plans for the building, you know.
What, like, what is it, what is?
What is it?
They wanted, I called the, the company building, and he asked, I don't know where it is, they asked for cut sheets and something, something, I sent him the list, and he sent them, he sent exactly what his cut sheets and what his, whatever, whatever that they asked for.
It does not explain the building well, we don't know what the materials are, most of the dimensions on most of the sheets don't read at all, either they were in color when these were painted black and white, or they were whited out or something, I don't.
I thought they wanted the cut sheets of, I just told them what, what was written on the paper, I gave it to him, and he said, well, the building before he is, here's what you asked for.
This one says.
It seemed kinda weird to me too, like, there's no picture.
This is right wall, I thought it said like.
It usually is a labeling of materials, it looks like a concrete block base, and then the building sits on top of it.
Well, I mean, there is a point there, then.
I, no, I know, it is kinda weird too, where he said that's, they want the technical thing, this is the technical thing, I'm like, well, to me, I can't even tell it's a building, but he said, well, if they know, if they're planning board, they, that's what they wanted, the, the cut. Cross-section, they called it, or something?
I mean, this is.
I don't know, to me, it looked.
Very bankrupt.
These are a lot of.
What's that?
It looked funny to me too.
That looks like.
No, this is alright for, it's odd, it's like, I mean, Pedro. It was to download this weird CAD footprint.
I mean, what the bylaw asks for are elevations.
Yeah, these are elevations.
And that, that actually should indicate the dimensions.
Just make sure it doesn't look like that.
And that's pretty legit, right?
I need the.
Yeah, you, you want a picture.
We're calling, we asked many times when we.
You wanna look at an architectural picture.
No, no. David's right, what people normally bring into every planning board in the state that I love, they're like, I don't know, I've been to three or four or five towns, and they do, when they come in and they have a building, they have just elevation on a board or even on a plan, you know, they just, can be on a piece of paper, but it's the colors, the materials, what does it look like?
They've got better stuff than this.
Can I, just, in the, the bylaw, in terms of the site plan review, what, what is actually it's asked for, is very specific, architectural drawings showing facade, cross-sections, and floor plans of proposed buildings, additions, and reconstructions, so, I mean, I guess, I think they have submitted stuff that's actually more technical.
I think it's more, I think it's that technical terminology, exactly what he did, but I don't agree with it either, I'm total agreement, cause I can't tell it's a building.
What we're wanting to see is each elevation on each side, you wanted to.
Whether it's a sloped roof, or.
Yeah, yeah.
A peaked roof, or.
I mean, you can't even tell the.
Yeah.
I can see that, but it isn't very good.
Like, you see something being built across the street now, right?
It's confusing.
Landscape, you know, that metal building across the street.
You should have seen the adorns.
The floor plans, I mean, I don't know, is this gonna be just one big open, or is it gonna have like partitions?
It's not gonna have any upstairs and downstairs, they have the partitions, yeah.
Is it one?
Three bays, right?
It's one, it's one flat, it's like a slab, like that table, and then they put a building on, and they partition it.
The three bays, but I can't even see if there's garage doors on this.
It doesn't show with the door, so.
Yeah, the, yeah, that's what, the elevation.
I think I heard. Yeah, it's weird.
Well, no, it's partially, I can see, it's an interpretation of this. Now, wouldn't you agree it's an interpretation of this?
It's weird.
You know, honestly, I was also trying to save some money, he wanted deposit with the building, I said, I don't wanna put no thirty thousand dollar deposit in the building, if the board, if it's gonna be so difficult and expensive for me to build it, that I'm not gonna follow through with it, so I'm kinda like, I've already spent ten thousand dollars on this project, I've been a citizen of Raleigh my whole life, I spent ten thousand dollars, and I know I'm not really much further, and I'm afraid to go and spend another ten thousand dollars, but you do need a picture, I'm not arguing that, I'm just nervous, plus spending a ton of money already, and, and just making it so difficult that I can't do it.
That's a fair point, I, you know, and so.
I did cheap out, the architect wanted twenty-five hundred dollars to draw a picture, literally a picture of a building with garage doors, I'm like, that's ridiculous.
It's like, my kid could draw that, you know? Let's not go there.
Who is the provider of the metal building, Star?
You know, he's on my phone, and I just.
He's not.
We'll need it now.
Not now, but by the next meeting, this Greg Allen's name, but I don't know.
He's a rep.
I don't know, he built it out of my guess.
He should be able to help you with some renderings.
Should be able to find something better off than what we got here, because.
Yeah, rendering, that was the word that I asked one guy, and it was, yeah, twenty-five hundred dollars, I'm like, there's nothing there, it's not like you're drawing the thickness of the concrete, it's not like you're drawing, you're drawing an empty shell.
We need a better drawing from these people.
I do agree with that, I do.
You can get.
What about photos, would photos be?
They would help too.
What color would you like to see?
I don't have a color to make it.
We've gotten photos of the metal Morton building.
Bring a color check.
Yeah, well, the color facade, the type of facade he wants with the type of metal.
You type out or a descriptor of the, the materials, and we got, you know, the dimensions, I can't even read on this.
Building sitting on top of a concrete block wall?
Uh, no, it's gonna be a slab.
A slab, and there, there will be a foundation too, across.
Like, it's gonna look like a miniature building, a building across the street, but it's not gonna be nearly that tall.
Yeah, right.
For one thing.
On your.
Here it is, this one sheet has had.
From you guys as us, you know, C E's, are you just throwing like the envelope for the building?
Says it's one twenty-five by forty.
Just the envelope for the, in the foundation elevation.
One twenty-five by forty.
Yeah, I knew you were doing that in the beginning, so you don't wanna refine that, Mark, you just kinda like, I don't wanna. Well, no, you kinda do, because you want some latitude, but what is the fourth thing about that? I mean, Larry's gonna wanna know where the building is gonna be right now.
Well, the building's gonna stay where it is, isn't it?
Well, we don't know where it is.
They tried, she tried to move it, no, no, we don't have, it's not, this is just a, what's the word?
A representative envelope for a building, it's not the exact site.
I, I think that was, that was based on what you gave, I suppose, what you wanted.
So, it would be nice if you guys could sit down and actually, you have a nice civil engineer plan here, and actually cite the building.
I thought you had.
Yeah, the plan, it is cited, it is exactly where it's gonna be.
This is existing, I said, here.
Oh, yeah, that's the existing point, see, there, there's structures over here, that wasn't gonna be removed.
I didn't show the picture of it on here.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
If they showed the picture of the building itself, doesn't match, that's why I wanna make sure of that.
I can't tell you.
Is this, cause we got the slab, no, I don't see, one twenty-five by.
Says everything I need to say.
By forty.
That's cool, okay, I, we'll draw that question, that's fine.
Eighteen, nineteen feet four, by sixteen on the back.
Okay, that's just it, okay, because we're gonna throw, I mean, there's a number of Morton buildings in town, there's a number of metal buildings in town, and, well, come before us.
What do you agree with them all?
I call Morton boy, they're really expensive, and they're wood, I get scared of wood, wood going in the dirt, wood going in the concrete, I don't know, I'll trust that one up till the twenty years, like, I don't want to.
Well, there's ten metal building companies at least.
Yeah, there's a bunch.
Alright, David brought up the, so we're, we're getting Rich Thieves and Kirk, and All right. David brought up the, so we're, we're getting the seats, um, and Kirk, and any questions on that? So, what, colors, materials, elevations that we can just...
They have color charts.
Yep. I think the photo thing is a good idea. You wanna save some money, you know, from the vendor. Um, I don't think you need to draw up a fancy, uh...
Yeah, I couldn't believe it. It's only $25. I'll draw one picture.
Well, you know, like, he's not, that's not where you're gonna, you know, if he's gonna tell me where we put the bathrooms and everything separately, then yeah. If you're doing 16, if you're doing 35 duplexes, you can do, you can give a representative, but this is the small, we don't care, you know?
43.
It's just one single. I can't help it. We grew up so poor that I just wanted to try to pinch every penny, you know?
The arbivites are not, I think I said that the last time.
You know, I was thinking about that. I, there must be deer, but I don't get any, they don't eat any of my pine stuff. You know what? Let me ask Amy.
No, they don't, pines, they don't eat pine, but they do eat arbivites.
My next one, Amy, she has a whole row of arbivites. I gotta look at them, because they started out that tall, and now they're up to that ceiling. I should probably, I never thought to take a look at her and see if they're full of you and the family.
Uh, I don't know about that.
Because they eat used.
Oh, yeah, used and arbivites.
I think whatever she has, I'll have to ask what she has, because hers is not getting eaten. I don't know what she has, though.
Do you think?
Well, does he wanna put 16 arbivites in, and we check them a year later, and they're gone?
No, I think, I think you gotta change that. It's, uh, I'm not gonna approve.
They do get pretty big.
Arbivites.
The deer are gonna eat them.
Look at white pines or something.
I can see two of them. Do you have Graham's, uh, report?
That market basket in the back, they've got some screening.
Where's that?
Excuse me. Are there any other suggestions? Site Cliff, do you have any suggestions?
Well, I think we need to do a site plan and see exactly, I mean, I am concerned about, you know, the, the comment about, we've already got a site that, that isn't beautiful, and this is gonna add to that lack of beauty.
Why don't we set one up, another site, site visit?
So I'm concerned what this is gonna look like from row one, you know, have another building on top of this, the car lot.
When do you wanna, can we do a site plan, some, a site visit? Before the next meeting, the next meeting, Mark, is, um...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth of December, and we're trying to, you have made progress. I know you don't think. If you look at Kirk, you talk, you have made...
No, I know.
There's progress, though. Not like, but, you gotta tie up some loose ends and just...
Yeah, well, I didn't, yeah, someone wanted management thing, I remember that.
Well, that's in their court. It's a requirement, and it helps with the, we work closely with the Conservation Commission to expedite, you know?
Right.
All right, go ahead. So what's the date for a site visit?
Well, I know it's on the forces, but number 11 says it already, it's on...
From the original, where's the, September 23rd.
Yeah, but what, I needed, we're doing a site visit, so that's, that's what's on the floor right now. Cliff, I think, brought a clip for you.
Saturday, what, Saturday morning?
Yeah, yeah, that's...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This Saturday?
No, he doesn't, it's supposed to warm up.
Yeah, it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
Well, there's no light. Well, you're home. I can, I can make it.
Okay, yeah, I can.
Steve, Chris, Steve, Chris?
I'm, uh, you know, I, I, I like the idea of a Saturday morning. It certainly would facilitate me being there.
Can I check my auction schedule? I'll get back to Kirk. A lot of equipment auctions this time of year.
You wanna, that's fine, you're in that.
I really wanna be, there's a lot of, you know, Lotus right now are high. You don't believe why people look at the Lotus. It's unbelievable. All right, quietly, Jeep begging me.
So eight or nine o'clock?
Wait, this Saturday? This Saturday?
Yeah.
I, no, I got one this Saturday. I'm sure of it.
It's all right.
I got one, I'm doing it Thanksgiving weekend.
Come around.
The sixth. How about, uh, Saturday, the sixth?
I think so. I'll just, I'll let him know.
All right, right now, I'm saying, okay.
We'll go on the sixth candidate.
I don't think it matters to us when we do it, it's, you know, before the, you don't want...
No, I don't.
Or six feet of snow.
Sixth at nine o'clock?
This Saturday?
No, no, December 6th.
Six in the morning?
Could you stake the building, so we know where it is?
I'm sorry.
I don't, I can't do that. Otherwise, we're just gonna turn around and go home and have coffee.
I can get, yeah.
I can, I can figure it out pretty well, though, yeah. Unless Larry comes with us.
It's confusing. I keep thinking I can stake it out, too, in my mind, and...
Yeah, it'll, it won't be a survey, this is, no, this will be a...
Asking for due diligence, I'm not asking for a survey.
You leave within five feet?
You drew the book. This plan was drawn by your office, right?
Yes, yeah.
Take the plan, take your expertise, and do the best you can.
Yeah, so you know if it moves over this way or forward, and it's, you know...
It's okay.
No, we've got the concept, but we need, I think Cliff wants to see how it's paid up, and we need to visualize.
Yeah.
Uh, we do, we do it.
December 6th, what was the time?
Nine.
Nine AM.
We did it next door. We do it almost every, we do it in every, every...
Yeah.
Across the street.
Can we, uh, we all attend that meeting without violating the open meeting?
Well, that, um, the office is no deliberation.
Yeah.
You just have to watch with it. You can have a site visit.
To be safe, you might, might as well post it.
They could post it, yeah.
You should post it.
Yeah, we have, yeah. I mean, it is safe.
That gives, that's what you need, is that, yeah, okay. I'll talk to Kirk. As chairman, I'll take care of that, so.
Does that make sense? No, no.
I don't get a charge again, am I?
No, no, they just talk, they just post it on the floor up in...
All right, can I have a motion to continue this to eight o'clock on seventeen?
I make a motion to continue this to...
Eight o'clock on seventeen.
Uh, on seventeen?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, second.
Second, all's in favor?
All right.
Um, I know I didn't really address my light plan, but I did pick out the exact candlelight power lights, and it's Dark Sky approved and all that stuff, which I learned a lot, like, on the internet, and it's definitely, I went to the Dark Sky approved site, and it's LED lighting, there's two of them that seem really small. Nice, very popular, 2.5 candlelight power, which is...
Cheap to run.
They're expensive lights, though.
No, but they don't cost anything to run.
Yeah, maybe it's a little...
It's $700 a piece.
Oh, yeah.
Two of them.
Electricity-wise.
It used to be 1,500. Here's a guy, see?
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Turn on the mic over.
Okay. Thank you. I think, uh, I appreciate you coming and addressing, and then, but coordinate things, you gotta tie it.
Yes, yeah.
I can get a whole letter.
I do need to get a whole...
Again, I hear what. It's very key, and, uh, Kirk, we're not sure what you'll, hopefully, come next meeting.
What?
We're gonna have to have to make sure that, uh, Larry can get here, but if not, we'll try to get him.
I'll just go to his office every day and offer him...
At least if I can speak with him, just to make sure, if he says, if he says a standard's not met, then I'd like to hear which standard he says.
That's fine. Let engineers do their thing.
Exactly. It's something you, you guys might not wanna even hear, just to hear the final outcome, you know?
You can Skype, I can go right to his office. I'll keep honering the doors, like, you know, and you can, guys, we can talk face to face. That's why we have, thank you, Mark.
See you, guys.
Thank you for coming. Did you come down from Kittery?
Me? No, I didn't need it.
Oh, that's just bad.
This is in Kittery.
Yeah, it's a straight shot.
I work in dentistry, I can really...
Oh, okay. Maybe I work as a needle.
Um, thank you very much.
Okay.
Fairly, yeah. On the project update, I don't, you wanna even...
No, it's hard to look at.
People just read a while, Larry, I asked him to do a summary of, uh, and Cliff did a report last week, too. We have some, uh, changes that have to be reflected in, uh, in the Asbilly, you know, in the plans. We're really trying to help, um, move, and I, we have a little time, but we're coming, getting closer to the time when we have to get all the paperwork submitted. So read that, and hopefully the 17th, then we can... Uh, this is for Wild Pastures Estates, okay, tonight. There's kind of a summary of what, like a, a status report, and really where we're at in terms of kind of some of those loose ends, small loose ends. To be able to take a vote, to get it on a warrant for approval, you know, to get it approved in the spring. Just read that for next time.
I probably would. Is that not just what they asked for, but what they're asking for, but also with Dexter doing minor modifications, revised...
Because I think, we, we can possibly wait till, like, the meeting after the 17th, I think that's in January. But if there are some things that still need to be done with, then we get really short in terms of getting it on them.
Well, I mean, we have to...
Because the warrant gets written up, what, in February, March, except for the special time.
Yeah.
March, can go to sleep.
So I...
But they, but they're already working on the revised plan, uh...
Yeah, right. Yeah, I know that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, I think that's gonna be the driver.
And I think Kirk, go ahead.
But we saw that about the minor modification.
Well, I'll bring it up next meeting.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Uh, yeah, I didn't know if you wanna, like, deal with the street acceptance at the next meeting.
I do.
Um, we all had... What's his name, the second agenda, dealing with the minor modification?
Equipment auction, yeah. No, he wasn't, he don't...
I'll talk to you about that, just in terms, what Kirk has been doing, some work in terms of, uh, you know, the town council and so forth. You know, the memorandum, understand how to, how to deal with this appropriately, that's all, so that we do it right to the T.
Well, it, it makes sense. I mean, it's interesting, we more or less determined in the spring that there wasn't such thing as a minor modification. Now we're faced with having to prove this.
But it has, but it has a little bit of a different connotation.
This is for, uh, for actual...
No, I agree. I mean, I think it's appropriate that we, we go back and do this.
Yeah, it's not like during the visiting classes, that's it. Um, all right, so then we just have, uh, do you have any updates?
Um, no, actually, that was...
That's good. Bills, expenses, we need to sign?
Nope.
That's good. Prover minutes? And also, thank you very much.
Okay, here's some, uh... You talking about the minutes, huh?
Yes, please. Um, I'm gonna get one. Clean his throat, I mean.
On the, uh, on the...
The English major.
On the first, no, on the first page, under Wild Pasture Estates, the second paragraph, uh, where you talk about, um...
Medications.
Well, yeah, I was gonna...
We're doing it at the November 5th meeting, right?
Instead of field medications, it should be field modifications. That was a, that was a good one. All right, this is, um, but just above that, when there was a reference to the slightly higher elevation that, that the home was, was built at, slightly high...
That's why I had a question.
I think it was more than slight. I mean, I don't know what, if, you could say significantly higher elevation, I guess.
Yeah, and, and I think David and I are both a little lost, because we're, Wild Pasture Estates is on page two on the minutes I have.
Wow.
Yeah, that's, I don't have page two.
I've got draft, it's November 5th.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have the first page.
Okay.
Uh, when I copied it, I didn't even state it.
For sure, I think it's almost...
So you probably would have separated.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry about that. All right, well, then I'll go back to the beginning, then. Go back to the real page one.
Okay.
Um, uh, the first heading, for Main Street, um, uh, the applicant's engineer asking for continuance of the hearing to allow additional time to develop. It's not, instead of developed, you take off the ED at the end of that.
Okay.
And, uh, and requesting, instead of requested, to make it, uh, similar with, with asking.
Okay.
And then, uh, you know, if I can move along, on the next heading, 56, new report, turn, turnpike, in the second paragraph, Baker notes that the board had previously, or had previous disgust, and I think it's previously discussed.
Okay.
All right. Um, and we're talking, oh, I misspelled my name.
They had a previous...
It's, uh, it's IE instead of...
Sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay. Um, there's something about that, that statement. Pierce states the bond was intended only to ensure landscape installation. It should not be used to guarantee compliance within the scope of the, of the site plan approval. I, I would say that, that the bond was intended to ensure landscape installation, and should not be used to guarantee overall compliance with the conditions of the site plan approval.
Okay.
Cause I, I think that's terminal.
But also, you, you stated that the bond was related to the memo at such and such a date, that we had the memo. We went back to what the bond was originally.
Right, and that's what...
You need to refer to that memo, please, because really, we were, wasn't that a key?
Absolutely. I think it was key to tonight's discussion, too, is, you know, that's why, certainly why we released the bond the other day.
Yeah.
But, uh, that, that doesn't mean that we're satisfied with the way he's applied with the order and subsequent to...
Which is the other part of this statement.
All right.
Yeah, which is the other part, yeah.
And then, the, the last sentence in that same paragraph, Petrillo, uh, should be a comma after Petrillo. Petrillo, comma, has the associate planning board member.
So, what I would like, Kirk, can we write these frames on the next meeting, or send them to, or we can, uh, if we're gonna close the meeting, we can even approve these at the, uh, site plan, I mean, at the site visit, all right? Because he asked it, I hate to have, like, an unknown sentence, because I asked him to add that memo. I don't really want to take a bond on approval without having a whole sentence.
Having real copies for our fields.
Is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
We're not gonna, it's not crucial that we have all of this.
No.
Okay, Cliff.
Uh, okay, moving along to the second page, the discussion on 180 Main Street, um, the second line of that first paragraph, where you say, it's just a little bit awkward, that, that Dave Clark was present to introduce our project to build a two-single-family dwelling. And just take the A out, two-single-family dwellings, and put an S on dwellings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, good question.
And I would just, uh, I can't believe Cliff missed this, uh, I'll put back at Wild Pasture Estates, I think, uh, you, uh, mentioned, uh, town council, comma, Judy Pickett.
Yeah.
Other comma.
I was gonna say that. I, I did miss it, but I, I wanna go easy on that.
I know, it's good, yeah.
Why? Hold your eyes.
Yeah, you, you tend to underuse commas, I've noticed.
Have you ever read state law?
Huh?
State statute when you're preparing...
Have I ever read it?
No, I'm just saying, you see how they don't even, they just kinda like a big round sentence.
Oh, yeah, right, but they use commas.
It's kinda funny, they don't have a schedule. But it's kinda, I couldn't believe when I was just...
Oh, yeah, some of it, yeah, the zoning law, 48.
It's like the longest sentence ever.
Yeah, well, no, I'll, I'll show you the longest sentence. It's in the social security.
I was reading the liquor, I was reading the liquor law, like, it was crazy, man.
In that very next line, as a typo, we talk about, um, but is now has its frontage, I mean, I think you take the is out, so, Main Street now, but now has its frontage on Church Street, yeah, just take the is.
Okay.